Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call to order the August 4th Cabarrus County Board of Education Work Session. Appreciate everyone being here. Before we get going, I would like to recognize Deputy Dave Moose who unfortunately just stepped out right when I started talking. So, there he is. Dave's our SRO from Northwest Cabarrus Middle School. We thank you very much for the hard work you do out at Northwest Middle and for being here tonight for us. I would also like to welcome Barb Slingerland, our new EC Director, who is here tonight. We welcome you to Cabarrus County Schools and we know you're going to do great things. So, thank you very much for being here. With that, Board Members, we need to adopt our agenda, so I'd like to ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to remove the Agenda Item 6.1, which is...
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to remove Agenda Item 6.1, Cabarrus County Schools Middle School Magnet Program Criteria, and have the Policy Committee, which also includes Ms. Carpenter and Mr. Harrison, to develop, work with developing policies and guidelines that they will bring back to this Board for review in October.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Walter?
I put the policy on because I have, we have concerns about the process. I'm glad that we have a committee that we're, you're willing to at least look at it, but I think if we also address it today, we've got 40 kids that were affected by a criteria that was not publicized that negatively affected some of them. It created, you know, possibly an unnecessary school transition. So, by addressing it today, there might be an opportunity to help those 40 kids, and that's why I brought it to the, put it on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Walter. Any other further discussion? Hearing none. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. So, that carries five to two. We will pull 6.2...
Four to two.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Carolyn's not here. Four to two with Mr. Walter and Dr. Phillips dissenting, so we will pull 6.01. And just as a reminder, that is something that the Board has requested to come back from the Policy Committee to the Board in October. So, we will be addressing that in October. Now, I'd like a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
So, moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Harrison.
Second.
And a second from Mr. Schumaker. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that carries six to zero, and we will move on, and we will ask Ms. Klutz to come to the podium for our budget update. Welcome, Kelly.
Thank you, and good afternoon. Today, I'm prepared to present a budget update. We were prepared to review the local impact of the budget with you, and of course, over the weekend, we were able to get more information regarding the state budget. So, now I'm prepared, as you know, we were, we uploaded some information on Board Docs regarding the state budget, so I'd like to present that information to you as well. So, we'll start with the local budget, the impact to the local budget, and then we'll go on to the state budget. So, the document that you have in front of you, page one, is a summary of our budget request to the local government, Cabarrus County. There's a funding requested, 2014, 2015, and the categories that the county likes for us to request those funds. The middle column is funding received. Those are the dollars that were adopted by the county, the county budget. And then, to the right, the column that says contingency is the dollars that the county has indicated that are held in contingency based on a criteria that should be or could be met by us, so we could obtain that funding. So, we'll review those items as we go. So, for the operating expense continuation, we requested $1.2 million. You'll see that there's no funding actually received in that, in that area, but in the contingency item, there was $466,000 allocated in the contingency item, and that was the dollars to match the state pay increase. And at the time when we requested these dollars, we did not know what the state pay increase was. We know now what it is, and we expect the county, the county has made a commitment to match the locally paid employees to the state pay increase. And so, I have adjusted the following sheets to reflect the amount that would be necessary to match that. This amount is the amount that they've held in contingency, not the amount that is necessary to match the state allocation, the state pay increase. The next item is the operating expense expansion. We requested $6.9 million, and the funding received category is $1.1 million. That reflects the pay increase that was approved February 14, 2014, the pay increase that we've already received. There's no additional funds allotted. That's the 1% pay increase to our staff, and it was prorated from February to June of last year, and this is the continuing funds that we need to continue that pay increase. There's no additional new funds. Okay? The charter school allocation, we made a request for $1.4 million. The funding received is $434,000. That's in the county's budget. There's $434,000 set aside, held in contingency based on the second month's ADM. Once those, the ADM is verified, those can become available to us.
Ms. Klutz, can I ask you a question in reference to charter school allocation? The 1.4 that we requested, how was that compared to what we actually used last year? Do you have that figure? I mean, was this, this 1.4, is that a substantial increase over last year?
The 1.4 is, does reflect the increase over, it's 100% increase over last year. The funds that we have this year are not in this request at all.
Okay. So, are we, are we in this 1.4? Are we recouping what we had to pay on the county's behalf from our own funds to charter schools?
That is not in this request.
It's not in that?
It's not in this request.
Thank you.
Okay.
How much was that? How much did we have to pay out of pocket for charter schools last year?
I believe the budget amendment that we, the Board approved was $313,000, and right now, I'm reaching from memory just a little bit, but I believe it was $313,000. And so, that was the projection we were doing early, so I made the budget amendment to cover what we were expecting to happen between that period of time and June 30th. At the end of the school year, we come out to be, I think, $304,000, $5,000, so I had about $10,000 left. So, the projections were close, but not exact, of course, because through the school year, you have the charter school students that leave the charter school and come back here, and if they do that, I don't pay the charter school, so the financial obligation decreases, and so that's what happened, is I projected that out to the end of the year based on the number that we had, made the budget amendment. We had some of those children come back, and I didn't pay those charter schools. So, it was, it was over $300,000 that we had to pay. Mm-hmm.
And so, the funding received is the funding based on the June 16th budget that was approved by the Commissioners? Is that true? That the, when you have the funding received, that's what that's based on, is the June 16th budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Preliminary numbers yet as to the number of charter students there will be in the county, or it's too early to even start trying to pull that together?
Right. We'll, we'll only have the projections that we, we had when we did these, these projected numbers at 1.4 for a while, until, until the students start showing up in our doorstep and the charter schools. It'll take a little while before we'll start getting numbers, better numbers.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. And so, the, as we go down the document, we're looking at the Facilities and Operations Budget Request. We requested $1.2 million for building maintenance. The county did allocate $343,444 for building maintenance, and if you look to the far right, there's a note there that says $45,406 allocated to Canaplis City Schools, and that's because we take care of their facilities and their grounds, and so, those dollars come to us on their behalf, and we take care and spend them for that purpose. So, although we'll get the money, we'll spend it for them, too. So, that's, that's why that's noted there.
Can I ask a question? So, the 343, does, it includes the 445, 406, or does not include?
It does not include.
Okay.
So, we will get, you know, $45,000 in addition to the 343, but we must spend it on Canaplis. Okay. All right. So, there's the grounds maintenance budget request of $435,000, and you can see there that there were no dollars allocated by the county for the grounds area. Okay? Then there's the, the technology budget request. You can see $6.6 million was the request, and the $4,800, that is part of the, the pay increase that was approved in February 14th. It's just that the county wants us to put our funding in buckets, and so, that $4,800 is just a piece of that pay increase, and it's just in that proper funding category. Okay? All right. We'll go down to our capital, capital outlay budget request. We requested $2.8 million of non-facilities projects, and we received $1,020,000 from the county. We requested capital projects greater than $500,000, $96 million plus, and we did not receive an allocation for that line item. Capital projects less than $500,000, over $20 million, and I, and you can see, no dollars were allocated for those projects.
Ms. Klutz, just for clarification to the viewing audience and for those that's here this evening on capital projects, non-facilities, we requested $2.8 million, and we got $1,020,000. Could you explain to the people what non-facilities items are? Thank you.
I am happy to, but we have a document that shows the detail of that $2.8 million. Would it be appropriate just to, to review that list when we... Okay. All right. Can we get to that page in just a minute? Is that all right? Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. So, now, that was a summary of the information. Now, we're going into detail. Part of the continuation cost are here, as you can see on this screen. To the far right, I've updated some of this information as we've had updated information from the state. So, when this, the budget presentation was made, we didn't know what the state was going to recommend for raises. We were all over the place. You have the Governors, the House, the Senate, you have all those, you know, conference versions. Now, over to the right side, I've calculated what the actual cost of the locally, the match to the state raises will cost. And so, the $139,957 is what it's going to cost the county to match our, our state, our locally paid teachers. The $127,522 is what it's going to cost to match the non-certified and the central office staff, school building administration. And then, the assumption would be that if teachers got an average of 7% pay increase from the state, then we should increase their supplement 7%. Otherwise, they're going backwards. So, that's why you see the $549,500 number calculated there. Okay?
I'm sorry. Increased teachers, A0 to A4, is that a classification level?
It's years of experience, and so, so we pay our least experienced teachers out of locally paid dollars because we maximize our state allotments by paying the higher-paid teachers out of state, lower-paid teachers out of local. And so, you're seeing that that's the, the years of experience, A0 through A4.
All right. So, what you're saying is they funded $139,000? What does that funded mean? Is that what the local funded, so they still owe us another, almost another $30,000, $26,000 to make that whole?
No, it will take 100, the $139,957 plus $127,522 to take care of what they have committed to doing, and they have more than that in the contingency than, you know, that they had set aside earlier.
So, would you just naturally subtract the $139,957 from the $166,508, and that delta would be, or that difference would be what the county would owe us? Or do I, I'm doing it backwards?
So, what you're saying is that the county had set those, those other, the amount... Let me go up here. So, the county had set $466,000 aside in their contingency.
Right.
You see that number?
Yes.
Okay. And so, now what we're saying is that, so if we take the 466,155, and subtract out what it's literally going to cost now that a decision has been made, you're saying the difference is now freed up, is what you're saying. Is that correct?
Yep.
And the difference is 198,677, if my calculator's working properly.
So, they owe us 190...
Well...
They need to supply us an additional 198 out of their contingency.
I would say that, that those dollars are freed up, and a decision could be made about those dollars.
But, but that doesn't include the 4, $549,000 for supplements?
You're correct. That does not include the $549,500. That's correct.
So, one possibility is to ask them to...
To put that money towards...
Towards us, increasing the supplements.
Yes, that's correct.
Is it my understanding that the Governor has not yet signed? He has not yet signed, so this...
Has said he will, but has not yet signed.
My understanding is that he will. He's indicated that he will. Okay. Okay. So, continuing on, I've made a couple of adjustments to the, the benefits at the bottom as we, at the time, we were using projected rates. Now, we know what the rates are going to be, and so, we've adjusted those to reflect what we know at the time, now to be what's going to happen. So, the, the numbers have changed just a little bit, not, not significantly. Okay?
Let me make sure I'm following that.
Okay.
So, the column on the right under funded, that's now a true number.
It's a true number.
The one to the left was projected.
Yes.
But by funded, you mean that's...
By funded, I mean...
Funded means money in our pocket to me.
By funded, I mean, they, these are things that are going to have to happen. I mean, we can't not match the, the state raises for our locally paid employees. We can't not pay our utility cost, you know, increase. We can't not pay the retirement increases. These are things that aren't options, so we have to fund those.
But they're not funded by the county. Our request to fund them is not funded.
Right.
We're saying we're going to pay for them.
We're going to have to pay for them.
That's what I was after.
So, the, page one is what the county has funded.
Yes.
That's...
June 16th budget.
Right. Which is different than what we're looking at.
So, that's funded, we're going to have to pull out of contingency or out of our fund balance to recover the costs.
Right.
Which is now, it's a true number.
We now know that, right, it's a true number. Right. Okay. So, the, the next document is the expansion request. We did not receive additional funding from the county to do any of the expansion items, and so, that's why you're seeing that column blank there. Here is the, the technology request. We have taken liberty to ask you to fund the $70,500 to add back the TFs for the two weeks in the summertime, based on our Budget Committee discussions and internal discussions with the administration. We are, we feel like we are spending a lot of this money anyway already, and the return on investment, we're having to contract with Dell and get these machines set up. We're having to contract to have some TFs in, in some of these leadership roles in the Leadership Academy and kinds of things to get the, the equipment set up and ready and be there for us. We, we feel like it's a much better return on our investment to, to get this 70,000, pay the $70,000 for 35 TFs, get them employed. They're actually, many of them are doing the work anyway, and we just feel like, yeah...
A TF is a technology facilitator?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Yeah, and that's where I'll go on my editorial rant, because I've done it in multiple meetings where we have people working for free, and that's not right. I mean, if they're doing the work, they should be getting paid for it. So, this is just another example. We've got others, but, so anyway, I'm, that, that's my high horse for the night.
Oh, I bet we all have a lot of high horses tonight to get on, but I'll keep mine as brief as possible. Back on page three of those items that are not funded, is any activity being performed on those items? Is any progress being made on those items, or are they suspended by virtue of not being funded? I guess what I'm asking is, they're not funded, does that mean nothing's being done on them?
Not necessarily. I mean, the, the items that are big dollar amounts, 2 million, a million, those are just things that we, we just absolutely can't do. The smaller items, those are things that we can consider, the Board can, can make a decision to do.
From fund balance.
From fund balance, from, you know, continuing operations types of things. Those are things that, if, if you want to tell me to slide in there, I'll, I can slide them in there. I mean, there's a limit to what I can do, but I certainly can't, I certainly can't do these million-dollar items, but...
And as you know, Ms. Pro, I'm sorry, as you know, Kelly, I'm only one vote up here, but otherwise, I would give you the okay.
I, I would love to tell you I could do all of them, but I simply cannot and keep you fiscally sound. But if you want to do, you know, these, the little items, certainly you as a Board have the authority to tell me to slide them in there and take care of them.
I wish there were a way to project what things would cost three and six months out. If we don't pay $10,000 for them today, would we pay $12,000 for them further out into the future? But that's maybe not realistic. But the reality to me is that if we don't pay for things now, we only turn out paying more for them later on, maybe in the aggregate. Thanks.
Okay. Okay. And so, now we're at the Buildings and Operations Budget Request. So, there's the request on the, in the middle of the document, and then the funded on the right side of the document. It's again been updated to, to match or to reflect what the state has granted for a pay increase, and to match that, basically for this staff, it's $500 per person. So, you can see that over to the right, and then the items, Priority Two, Two and Three are just carbon copies of the request. And so, you can see that the county did fund a portion of that, you can see, and then there's the Canaplis dollars, so all of that'll go toward the, these requests. And then, you can see that the county would have part of these dollars in contingency, too, because it's for salary to match the locally paid, the state paid. And then, we would need to move project dollars into this account, take our project dollars instead of doing projects, move it into operations, and take care of these needs. We find that it, you know, it's extremely difficult to do projects if you don't have feet on the ground. So, we understand that we have the ability to do that, and that's what we feel is necessary to do. Okay. All right. So, yes...
Kelly, can we just, at the end of that, the blue line on that indicates that the amount that we're going to have to fund out of our fund balance, what is that, 405,597? What does that mean?
405,597 is the amount we're asking for, we're requesting from the county for grounds.
Okay. Oh, okay.
Okay.
So, okay, so these funded here are different from the funded in the previous slide?
Well, so...
Because the funded in the previous slide was coming out of fund balance.
Right. And, and so, what we're taking here is the county gave us some money, and then we're taking money that the county gave us previously for projects, and we're sliding it over. We're not going to be able to do the projects, but we're, we're going to be able to take care of these needs. But no, we're not taking it out of our fund balance.
Can you just walk through those numbers again, so I can see? I just want to follow you on the sheet.
Okay.
I know what you're saying, and I know we've, that's what we've discussed. I just want to make sure I'm following on your chart.
So, at the bottom of the buildings where it says funded, $935,000. So, that number...
That's $94,755?
Right.
Don't round up, because we're looking for the number.
Oh, okay, sorry. Okay. All right. That number changed from the request, which was $1,204,414. Okay? You see that?
So, they're only left...
Mm-hmm. It changed.
Can't count.
Okay.
Oh, two of four, I'm looking at one of four. Yeah, okay, if you have...
Okay. That number changed for a couple of reasons. One, the, the salary number changed, because we had an estimate earlier, and now we have a real number. Okay? So, that changed. Also, you had a change in leadership in your Facilities Department. So, the priority number two, look at priority number two, the Buildings Request, the green line, $603,760 was the amount of request. Over here on funded, 476,583. Your new leadership said, "Well, you know, I need this, but maybe I can deal with this, and maybe I need to evaluate it for a little bit longer and make a decision, you know, later." So, this is what we said here.
So, that's what, one custodian disappeared.
Mm-hmm. Okay. And then, the same, you've got a little bit of variance in the, in the third priority. You had $510,000 went to $425,000. So, you can see those differences there, and he just decided to get less vehicles.
Okay.
Okay?
On the Buildings side.
Right.
And actually, on the Grounds side, too.
Yeah, $120,000 of equipment. So, those are the changes. So, so...
The three...
Sorry. The three green numbers directly above the 934,755 equal 934,755.
They do.
Okay. Now, I'm with you.
Okay. Same for grounds, and then your total goes down. So, what, what we now, where we, before, we're asking for $1.6 million, we're now asking for $1.3 million, because we, you know, we've changed our request just a little bit. And so, the county's given us some money, and so, those are the first two lines down here, okay, where I said, at the bottom, county funding increased to building maintenance, Cabarrus, $343,444. That's, you know, the first area that we're going to take money from. They've given us some money. Then, they've given us some money for Canaplis, 46, $45,406. And then, the next line item is the county had some contingency that they were going to pay our pay increases with, so that's the third item. And then, anything left, we got to take out of project money, because we don't have any more money. Got to move it out of projects.
So, this was, is there any leftover capital left, or what is it, the project money?
So, the county gave us, as part of our Facilities and Grounds money, money to do projects with every year in, in this account. We couldn't keep up with our projects, because we didn't have enough staff, and we didn't have feet on the ground. So, the projects were sitting undone, because we couldn't get money for staff, and our budget request wouldn't be in...
You had the people execute it.
We didn't have the people execute it. So, it doesn't make sense to have the money sitting there to do it if you don't have the staff to implement it. So, we're going to take the project, some of the project money, we're going to use it to make sure our operations are taken care of, get the people on the ground, then do all the projects that we've got, and then ask for more project money once we get all of that taken care of.
Okay.
Okay? Any other questions on that one?
No question. I was just going to state, just for the benefit of the rest of the Board and for the viewing audience, that's exactly what we did in, I think it was February of last year.
Yes, wow.
And if you'll notice, in the last probably three Friday reports, the amount of projects getting completed has grown exponentially. So, we, we knew this was a problem back. We found out in a Chair-Vice Chair meeting, that was something we could do, take that money, hire somebody. We did that, and now we're reaping the rewards or benefits of having that person turn out those projects. So, that, that's, that's just a real quick, brief explanation of, we've been down that road once before, and now we're going down again.
In, in actuality, that was the advantage of our budget process bringing to fruition, because we had Ms. Dubois, we had Mr. Downs all in the room while we were working on our budgets, and this came to light that we could use project dollars to hire people with, because we always thought project dollars had to be used for...
Projects. Projects.
Projects. And, and we were telling them, we were, we couldn't hire any people, and we needed to hire people, because we were falling behind, farther and farther, and couldn't execute. And so through this process, and then through our Chair-Vice Chair meeting, this bubbled up, and, and we got confirmation that we could do what we did.
Project dollars are those, not recurring costs, though, are they? So you're paying a salary with that in the...
No. The way that this is established and set up with the county, it really is recurring dollars. Yes, and I understand why you would think that, but it is. Okay. Yes, sir.
So, just for clarification, so we will not be dipping into our fund balance to pay the difference between what the county's increase is and what we want to increase. We're dipping into this project fund.
That is correct.
But for the items on the continuation cost budget, which were your Page Two, we are dipping into the fund balance, right? Because the county did not give us money for utility cost increases, they did not give us money for retirement cost increases, they did not give us money for cost increases in healthcare. Is that correct?
Unless we can convince them otherwise.
All right, we are in mediation, and we're not supposed to talk about that.
I'm not. I haven't given up yet.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's the answer, unless it comes up or we go any further. And, and we did a calculation up here, that, that dollar amount's 1,440,033.
Which one?
That's on...
For the fund balance?
From the first two pages.
Yeah, from the first two pages, the fund balance that we'll have to ante up to support those items is about 1,440,000 and change.
Okay. Okay. All right. Let's see. Okay. This is the, the page that I was styling Mr. Schu on until we could get to this document. So Facilities, Non-Capital. This is the, the budget request that totals 2.8 million dollars, 2.861803. And this would be the detail. So it's furniture for the schools, it's yellow school buses, it's cameras for the yellow buses, it's activity buses, service trucks, a bed for a wrecker, minivans, floor lifts, not forklifts, floor lifts, band instruments, band uniforms, those types of things. Facilities, these are all non-facilities. Facilities, obviously, are your roofs and your capital improvements and your remodels and those kinds of things. These are not facilities-related. And so out of the 1,020,000, the first 635,000 will go to furniture for the schools, and then the remaining dollars will go to school buses. Okay?
If I'm not mistaken, that's the first time in several years we were actually buying furniture for something other than a new building?
910?
910.
Fiscal year, 2009, 2010 is the last time we had a furniture allocation.
Five years. Okay.
Haven't bought a bus since 2007.
I had that in my old, my budget notes, and I didn't bring that. 2007, because of the two-tiered system?
Yeah, three-tiered system.
Excuse me, three-tiered system.
Now, this 385 does not include the additional money that we allocated.
Right. The board allocated some additional dollars at the end of the last fiscal year to put with this, so that we can make a, so that we can complete five school buses. This 385,000 will not get you five, but with the additional dollars that the board allocated, we will be able to purchase five.
So we'll get five in the hopper that we will receive in, near the end of 2015, oh, around June-ish, or next summer, right?
We will get them ordered, and, and it usually takes about a year, yes.
A year. So there are seven buses that are going to be deferred for, for at least a year, or whenever the county decides, wants to agree to help us purchase them.
Correct.
And then we'll be farther and farther behind the eight ball on transportation.
We will.
Yep.
But I guess what I'm trying to formulate in my mind is whether or not there's any kind of schedule by which we communicate with the county to address these particular needs, and I'm just picking the buses, for example. Might we anticipate some kind of agreement with the county for that 522,000 at a certain time? Or as of this moment, we don't know if it will be funded at all, much less when it might be funded. What, what don't I understand about, the, the funding column is blank in, in that case? We're just continuing negotiations with the county?
David, the, the budget that was passed by the county for their fiscal year does not include that, the June 16. So that may or may not be part of our mediation as we go through and forward. So, you know, that all depends on how it goes, and we can, I mean, the only comment really to make on that is they've requested information that we've provided, and we have another meeting that we've both agreed to, that it's not been scheduled.
That's, that's good enough. Thank you.
Okay. And so the next document, again, is, we've talked about this document, it's the Savings from Operational Budget. We're not, this was not a request for dollars from the county or anyone else, so we're just using our operate, our current operational budget efficiently, and we're showing you how we want to, or how we plan to use the dollars, the current dollars. And there's the request, and then, again, the fund. And the variance is, when we ask for 12 buses, but we only get five, we only need to hire five drivers. So that's why it's adjusted. And then the other items are the same.
In this one, because we created a favorability in the transportation budget, and this is one of the big winners that we had, where we worked on our operations and actually created extra dollars, which allowed us to hire people, we'll still hire the two mechanics, because we were both, we were behind the eight, we were behind in mechanics and didn't have enough mechanics to do the work. However, we're going to only have to fund 119. What will happen with the remaining dollars that they created in favorability? Will that go into our fund balance to be used in other ways, or will that stay in the Transportation Department?
We'll reinvest it, so it'll go back into, into their operational budget. They'll be able to use it for fuel, or parts, or what have you, and we'll evaluate it as we go through the year. And if they're looking to be in a favorable condition, we can move that over, and we can, so that's what we did this year. We looked at their budget as, as we went through, and we said, "You know what? You're, it looks good, we're going to buy that bus, or not a bus, that van that saves us money." And so those are things that, that are on your budget request, that maybe we didn't get down far enough. If we've got operational dollars, and we're not going to let them sit there and roll into fund balance, we're just going to go ahead. If it's going to save us money, and it's going to generate savings for that department, we're going to go ahead and, and make that happen within that current fiscal year, because they're, they're already budgeted dollars.
But if we were to get those 12 buses on order, we would have to have those mechanics in place, which would be at least four more mechanics, three per bus, I mean, one, one, three buses per mechanic, I believe, is kind of what they're doing back there. But we would have to hire more mechanics to take care of the new buses that came in. So that's why we would not want to take their favorability away from them, because next year, if we do get all 12 buses, they'll need those mechanics.
And we're not, we're not taking it away. No, we're reinvesting it in, in the program, so that they can create more operational savings, and it's working, so that they can reinvest it back in their account.
Are the savings out of the transportation area, I don't mean recurring, I'm not sure what the right word is, but we won't see those same savings year after year, will we?
It depends on, yeah, it depends on what we invest in. So with the McKinney-Bento buses, that's a continuing savings, we're seeing it every year. Another example is the GP, and I'm probably calling it the wrong thing, but the GPS, so we've put that on 30 or 40 of the buses, and we're phasing that in. You save labor, you're always going, you know, if you're constantly monitoring that and using that program, you're always going to save that. We're, we're doing all, all kinds of things like that, and those are continuing savings.
But you're not saying transportation is becoming self-sustaining, are you? Not by a long shot? Not by a long shot?
No, we, no. We have to...
Three percent of a big number is still a big number.
Yeah, really.
We're just not reallocating funds somewhere else, we're just keeping it within the department, is it?
Sorry.
We're not reallocating these savings somewhere else, we're keeping it within the...
We're keeping it within the department. So, you know, the, my goal eventually is, we do supplement local, you have state transportation dollars, and you have local transportation dollars, and my goal eventually is to reduce or eliminate the local portion of transportation dollars. We're not there yet. We can't, we can't eliminate that local portion until we get them on their feet and give them what they need to support themselves. But, so by reinvesting in transportation, year and year and year, then I may be able to get them self-sufficient on state dollars. And then I can start peeling away the local dollars, but I can't do it overnight, I can't, you know, I, I got to help them.
Go ahead, Dr. Phillips.
Yeah, when you made the comment about, well, we only need to hire five bus drivers instead of 12, it made me think, well, then, how are we getting all the children to their schools? How are we going to adapt to only having five buses when we thought we needed to add 12?
So you have more children on buses, and you have longer routes.
Well, and, and this problem is not going to raise its head until next year, because remember, we've got a year lead time on our buses. So the request for the 12 buses was for next year, the 15, 16 year. So that's why it was so important that we get these buses now, get them in the pipeline, get the order done, get them fabricated and delivered, and then we'll have to have the drivers next year when, when they come in. But right now, we want to have five, and so that's kind of...
So this is, these, these new buses are really tied to the new school, and not, not to just organic growth within a system?
No, this is growth.
This is growth.
The 12 buses total is tied to growth.
Mm-hmm. Every bus that the local entity purchases is growth, because the state takes care of replacement buses, so everything is growth.
And, and just to show you how it magnifies, I think next year, we'll come with a request for 17 buses, I believe that's what it is, for the 16, 17 school year. So that's because of the potential of growth that we're dealing with.
I think there's an SAT question there. 12 is to 5 is 17 is to, I'm going to guess 6, maybe 7.
Okay. Okay. So I'm going to stop right at this point, and I'm going to see if there's questions regarding the, the local budget, because I'm going to next go into the state budget.
Okay. Well, we, I think we peppered you pretty good throughout, but...
Okay.
Anything local that didn't get answered, Mr. Walter, Schumaker, Mr. Schu, Mr. Harris, and Dr. Phillips? I think we're good to, to proceed.
Okay. The document that you have before you is a DPI document. So everything that you see is a statewide number. So what I will do is, you know, this, this was received over the weekend, on Friday, and while I did spend a significant amount of time, I didn't take extra time to prepare you a new document. So I, I will translate from state to Cabarrus County Schools for you verbally, and we'll talk about it. But just know that the numbers that you're seeing are generally the state-level numbers. So the, the first document that I'm going to talk about is the salary, the summary of the salary and associated special provisions, because anytime I begin this conversation, I get peppered with salary questions. So we might as well talk about salary first, and then we'll talk about all of the other things. So as you know, teachers received an average of approximately a 7% increase in their, you know, varying amounts according to the steps. And I have a, a salary schedule in here that, that you can look at and see where the steps fall. Principals and APs, it's a, an average of 2%, and we can look at that, too. Basically, the breakdown is, as you see it, there's the, the six steps that you've, you've heard about, 0 to 4, and 5 to 9, and you can see, it tops out at 25 years and, and $50,000. So there's a lot of details that are left in that, that, you know, we have to talk about, but that's basically the, the salary schedule for teachers. They did not take away masters, and they did not take away national board pay. There is a little bit of a different way that it's calculated, but it's, it's nebulous, actually, I don't know if I'd call it nebulous, but it's, it's different. And I'm not sure that, that most will pay much attention to it, but it's calculated, it's bachelor's plus 10, and then it's bachelor's plus 12, where it used to be bachelor's plus 10 times 12. So it used to, it used to compound on top, where it doesn't any longer, so there's a small difference in how that's calculated. The, one of the important things that, so there was a lot of Facebook chatter over the weekend and on Friday about, "I'm going to receive a pay decrease, and I'm a 30-year teacher, and, you know, they don't appreciate me," and that kind of thing. Well, I, I just wanted to make it clear that there's a provision in there, and you can read right there, it's the third bullet, "Teachers will receive the higher of the 2013-14 certified rate, plus the longevity, and the 14-15 certified rate." So no one's going to receive less than they were paid this year, is basically what that says.
Go on, say that again for us, please.
No one is going to be paid less than they were paid this year. In addition, if you're paid the same, you're going to receive the $1,000 bonus pay, and that is a bonus. It's not, it's not guaranteed, it's just going to be a bonus, and it's going to pay paid $100 a month for 10 months. But they're not going to receive less than they had in this, this current, in 13-14. So I know there was a lot of chatter about that. Okay. So obviously, the huge thing is longevity is built into the schedule, and no separate payments will be made for longevity. That's for teachers and instructional and certified staff, does not hold true for principals, assistant principals, non-certified staff. I've received a lot of questions about that, so a lot of concern out there.
So, so you're saying that those, that other group will continue to receive longevity pay?
Will continue to receive longevity pay.
So that partially explains why principals are only getting a 2% salary increase.
Right. If you receive a much lower pay increase, you will probably receive your longevity pay. So categorically, non-certified principals, assistant principals, all of those will continue. If you're not paid, if you're paid on the teacher's scale, you will not receive longevity any longer, it's built into the, into the scale. Okay? So graduate pay, you know, we've talked about that, it's restored into the, you know, it was removed last year, it's restored. This explains, kind of in detail, that nurses and instructional support, for which the master's degree is required, will be paid. Teachers and instructional support who were paid on their master's schedule prior to July the 1st, that's, if you were paid on it, you're going to be, continue to be paid on it. We're not taking, they're not taking anything away from you, so that's just important. Grandfathered in, if you've completed your master's, your doctorate, or you're advanced by August the 1st, 2013, and would have completed under the SBE policy in effect. As far as I can tell, everything, a course, if you're in, if you're in a course, a master's course, on August 1st, 2013, you're, we will pay the master's after you complete the course, that's, after you complete the requirement, not when you've entered and completed, started the course, but once you've completed the degree, we will pay you. But you qualify and become eligible at, if you've started a course, August the 1st, 2013. And so there's... And so there's, that was definitely positive to go back into that. There was a lot of chatter about the infield requirement with this budget. There is no infield requirement. There was a lot of discussion about that. There will be national board for instructional coaches. The availability of national board for instructional coaches in Title 1 schools, that's new. So that'll be good. Differential pay for highly effective teachers. We can submit proposals for differential pay for some of our teachers.
I'm looking towards our city superintendent. Do we have any plans to go after that?
Yeah, I was just making eyes at Patty Norris, one of our teachers back there. Yeah, we will be submitting some proposals based on some of the work from Public Impact. You've seen some of those articles out of Raleigh Chapel Hill area and some really promising models of paying our best teachers more money to reach more kids. So those are some of the proposals we'll be submitting to Raleigh. We hope to be accepted. I think it'll be more like a grant-type application. You submit your proposals. Districts around the state will submit your ideas and then they'll award some districts, the winners, to implement experiment, kind of an innovative type of way to promote that.
And is that a, would that be based on technology and some kind of blended learning?
Ours is, yeah. Our proposal will be, yeah. You're actually gonna hear a little bit about that tonight, some of the work we're already doing, regardless of this opportunity, that I think will promote that type of structure.
And of course, the elimination of the funds for the 25% that we all know and love.
After all that.
Yes.
But we were ready.
And how much did that cost?
10.2 million. And then, so now we're down to school-based administration. Schedules are not tied to teacher salary schedules. There's, we mentioned this, I mentioned this before. There's a small increase that make an average of a 2% raise. I guess one of the important things that I see here is that the principals no longer receive a year for every three years of principal experience. And I think what's kind of maybe hard to understand or hard to explain is that they're gonna, those years of experience are sitting on their license right now and they're gonna go back and remove those experience years that they've earned past, if they've earned them since June 30th, 2009 to current, they're gonna remove those years. They didn't translate to dollars because, you know, we were frozen. We didn't have any, they didn't give us any money to reckon with those. But they put those years on their license. Now they're gonna go back and take them off. So as a principal, you're gonna have years on there and then they're gonna take them off. And I think that's a little disheartening, but that's the way it's gonna happen.
Would this impact their retirement?
No.
So it's just years on your license?
There's no money associated with it.
None. So it's not gonna hurt them at the end of the, when they go to whatever age they need to go to?
No. But you might look at that number and get excited that you're gonna, you think you're gonna be paid at a higher rate, but you're really not. And then, of course, longevity, we said this before, longevity remains for principals and assistant principals. There's a top-of-the-scale bonus for principals and below threshold for principals. And that's a bonus. It's not recurring. And then our non-certified and central office staff receive $500 added to their salary. We, of course, did not get the $1,000 like other state employees and we did not get the five bonus days like other state employees.
So will this go to our admin staff and our mechanical and transportation? And so they're the ones that are the beneficiaries of this?
Teacher assistants, clerical, custodial, facilities, transportation, technology, child nutrition, kids plus, all of those. Yes. And so.
But if you're a custodian or cafeteria worker who works for the state of North Carolina at, for instance, the state legislative building, you get $1,000 and five extra days vacation.
Yes, sir.
So why are school employees undervalued? Is there anything in the budget discussions that you've read as to why they're undervaluing school employees?
I can't tease that out. Not sure. But I do need to talk with you about another problem that this presents. When they award a flat amount to staff and we have 10-month staff and we have 12-month staff. So we have a custodian that's in a 10-month role and we have a custodian that's in a 12-month role and they get $500. So if they're part-time, you prorate it and I get that. These people are full-time, 40 hours, 40 hours. You take $500 and you divide it by the number of hours that they work. So the number of hours that a 10-month employee works is less than the number of hours that a 12-month employee works. So what happens is we add the increase to their hourly rate because they're hourly employees. What happens is a 12-month employee gets less of a pay increase than a 10-month employee just because of the way they do it. I'm asking you to fix that tonight. And just let me, let me give a 12-month employee the same pay increase that you give a 10-month employee because it's, they're the same job. It's just wrong.
But it also means that you have different hourly rates.
You would.
A 10-month employee has a different hourly rate as a result of this $500 increase versus a 12-month employee because the hours are different.
You would.
And so you have all these, you'll have all of these hourly rate schedules that you'll have to deal with. And by doing this, it makes it less complex on your end to keep up with all these 12-month hourly schedule versus a 10-month hourly schedule for just a custodian class. And then when you extrapolate it over all the different classes of employees, that could be a lot of employees.
We have, you know, varying rates anyway and our varying steps anyway. But it's just, it's just wrong. I mean, if I'm doing the same job, same clerical job, same custodial job and I'm a 10-month employee or I'm a 12-month employee, you should get the same pay increase. So anyway, I'm asking you to-
Okay. So basically, the 12-month employees, we will be giving them a $600 increase instead of $500.
Right.
And the extra $100 will come out of our fund balance somewhere or other efficiencies that you'll find.
Correct.
Okay.
And you haven't computed that yet?
No, it's, I mean, I can, but it's not, it's not that much.
Is it a bonus or a salary increase?
It is a salary increase.
So it is a salary increase.
It is a salary increase, yes. Yeah, it's 5 cent on the hour, you know, in this example. No, no, in my notes I do, but.
No, we're gonna continue.
Okay. So the next, so the next item was our benefits, our benefits rates. And we adjusted those. And then here's your pay schedule. So we're comparing it to, on the left is the previous pay schedule and on the right is the new one with the calculated increase in dollars and the increased percentage. And so you can see it goes from 7.1%. And then down here at the top of the scale, the 30-year teachers, you've got 0.3%. And then, of course, the 30-plus, they didn't calculate that because they're gonna get what they got last year and they're gonna get the $1,000 bonus. Okay. So that covers the salary and special provisions related to salary. And now we'll go into the rest of the budget. And the salary pieces are incorporated in here. So we'll just skip over the salary provisions when we get to them. The base budget, 6.4, that's displaying on your screen right now. This is a really big deal. It impacts our school district as much as it does any school district because we're growing and I want you to understand the magnitude of it. As you can see here, it changes how the average daily membership is built into the budget. Right now, in previous years, ADM was calculated in the continuation budget. So it was pretty much an automatic. If you grew, you knew you were gonna get money to take care of your growth. And they would put it in your planning allotment. You could play, you could in, you know, June or wherever, February, or you could plan to hire your new teachers. You could go to recruiting and take care of that need. With this change, these dollars will no longer be in the continuation budget but be in the expansion budget. So we will not get a planning allotment. We will not know whether we're gonna get the dollars to, for the growth until the budget passes. So this year, we wouldn't know until August. Previous years, it's been September. One year in my recollection, it's been October. So this system as a board would have to decide what in the world we would do. So as I went back and looked at our growth, back in 2006, we grew 1,467 students. In 2007, 1,805 students. In 2008, 1,482 students. And then we started tapering off. 2009, 549 students. And then 2012, 589 students, 760. So you get the idea. There's a lot of students involved. And then you take those increases and you divide that by 25. You need a teacher for every, at least every 25 students that you get. So we're looking at needing, if we go back to our normal growth that, and we expect to, we're gonna need to hire 30 to 40 teachers to sustain. But we won't be able to because we won't have any funding. We won't know whether we have any funding until August, September, October. Or we can make a decision to play Russian roulette and hire the teachers and not know whether we have any money for them. Hire them, you know, it could be a bad budget year. We could get the money, we could not get the money. If we don't get the money, we go to the county. Say we're flat broke.
So what you're saying is, right now with 30,000 children in our school system, if we grew at a rate of 3%, which is 900 kids or 900 students, we would need 36 teachers. We would not know whether we would be funded on the state side for those 36 teachers even though we knew we had an enrollment that high. And we would have to take a gamble or something.
Or something.
Or go out on a limb or use our fund balance, if it exists. Because we're starting to tap into our fund balance, it seems like, to hopefully supplant that 36, to make those 36 whole for a period of time. And hopefully, the state would make us whole sometime when they've approved their budget if they decided to do that.
That's correct. And that's what we're looking at with this change. And the state has decided, they're not even gonna give you planning allotments anymore because there's no reason to. They can't project anything. So it's really put us in a very difficult situation financially, planning-wise, hiring teachers. I mean, you almost have to be a year in arrears and hold your class size hostage for a year. So you just have to think about that. I mean, that's a possibility. It's not a good possibility.
The bottom line is both the county and the school system are gonna have to have larger savings accounts set aside for contingency because the contingency probability has just shot up through the roof.
Huge, huge. And it's just for growing school systems. You know, the school systems that aren't growing, it doesn't impact them at all. It's horrible.
Because they'll actually have extra dollars, at least for one year.
Maybe we could get a loan from them.
I'm sorry, I don't wanna go back too far. But you said typically or normally, you would find out when? I mean, it used to be you would-
We get our planning allotments in February.
Yeah, okay. So you're talking six months later now.
Yeah, yeah.
Any other questions on that? We're plowing ahead. We're on page 11 of 20.
Okay. We're, this, a lot of this, we've already reviewed. So we're gonna slip right past the salary and longevity and graduate pay because we've already reviewed it and school administration, benefits. Central office, you know, I wanna note that we did not leave this budget unscathed while we're appreciative of, you know, the teacher salary increases and certainly that's what we wanted. There are some items that we took some hits and here we, I'm gonna start telling you about them. So central office took a 3% reduction in that for Cabarrus County Schools is a $55,000 hit we're gonna have to absorb. Teacher assistance funding took a significant hit in this budget. It was a 22% reduction to the funding. And we know in Cabarrus County that we use that money to fund teachers, not teacher assistance. So that for us is about a $1.9 million reduction in funding. And that is about 35, the equivalent of about 35 teaching positions for us because we don't use that money for teacher assistance. We use that money for teachers. Okay? Yes, sir.
But the dialogue I have seen coming out of Raleigh was that, oh, they're putting that money in the budget for teachers.
That's what they said, didn't they?
So.
That's what they said.
So.
So I have a summary at the end, okay? So that's what they said.
Is that a summary or an editorial at the end?
We'll see.
We can answer that in.
So I just wanna say that in Cabarrus County Schools, I'm not suggesting that you or that we or the administration is not recommending any job cuts or any losses at all, dependent on this budget. Because we're in a position where, you know, I think that you can use your fund balance and we can, over years, over the next couple of years of using our growth to offset this. We'll be in, we'll be in a position where we'll be okay. We've suffered enough position loss and job loss that we, I'm not recommending to you by any stretch of the imagination that we lose staff. Just wanna clear that up right now. But I do want you to understand the impact of this budget. It was not, we were not, we did not leave this budget unscathed, okay? So for, we talked about teacher assistance. The teacher allotment formula is there and you can see that statewide, they allocated 761 teachers statewide. Now, our share of 761 teachers is about 15, okay? And I just told you that the equivalent of what we reduced in teacher assistance was about 35, 35, 36. So in my evaluation, I can't see that they're one-for-one. So we lost about 35, 36 and we gained about 15. And I can't find in the budget anywhere where we picked up any extras, okay? So in addition, we lost, we lost-
Before you go to that, there's this teacher allotment and class ratios. We're going down to 17 to 1 in first and it looks like it's saying second and third. Do we have the teachers in place to meet that requirement?
No, we do not. This is just the allotment formula. It's how they allot them to us. But we do not have enough teachers to have that level of-
So it's how we receive the teachers, not the requirement of maximum number. So the maximum is still the same at 23 in a class. We can't go over 23, but they're gonna give us one teacher per 17 kids in kindergarten or first grade. or first grade. Does that make sense?
But, so if we have allocations for 1 to 17 and we actually have 1 to 23, what are we doing with the extra staff? Is that, is that to build in planning time or what?
Correct, yeah. So you have to have planning time in there. Typically 15 to 20% of a day is planning period. So at any given moment in a school, 15 to 25% of the day, a teacher's not working with a kid depending on the high school, middle school, or elementary school planning period schedules. That's one reason, yeah.
Okay. So the 17 to 1 also factors in that you've got a music teacher and an art teacher and a PE teacher in the school?
Correct, yeah. That's a good way to think about it.
There was a reduction in at-risk funding. We use that funding for teachers. We use it for assistant principals. We use it just to fund like our opportunity school, those types of things. And so over, you know, over $250,000 of that was cut from that budget. And so those are things that we have to absorb or lose positions, certainly. The next area was transportation. There's a 1% reduction in transportation. That is about $92,000, $93,000 for Cabarrus County Schools. And we'll talk a little bit about the future impact to driver's education. It's on down the slide just a little bit. So textbooks. So you hear a lot about, well, there was an increase in textbooks. Well, there was. There was an increase in textbooks. $905,000 for statewide and that equates to about $18,000 for our school district. In addition, they removed the digital learning funds from schools and that was well over $360,000. So we got $18,000 and we were reduced $367,000. So, okay. I'm going to skip right over small county supplemental funding and we'll talk about driver's education. So part of the transportation reduction has to do with the desire not to fund driver's ed in 15, 16. So that's the idea. And right now, so they, they've indicated that we can increase our driver's ed fee from $55 to $65 to help compensate for the loss in funding. That will generate approximately $17,000, $18,000 for our school system. But the state funding is $514,000. So when that's eliminated next year, we will be in the hole $500,000 that we will need to generate somehow unless the state comes up with another option for us. So that's not this year, it's next year.
So once we go, once they eliminate, then we'll go up to 2,000 a kid, kind of like they do in Europe? That's what it costs to get a new driver's license? I mean, that's what it costs in driver's ed over there.
You may only collect $65 and you are required to offer driver's ed.
A classic unfunded mandate or...
Push it to the local...
Wow.
But that's not yet this year's budget, that's next year's. Okay?
Fun to be on next year's budget committee?
Let's start growing those money trees in the backyard as soon as we can.
Exactly. Exciting news all over. Okay. So then they want to, they've addressed our carryover, which is great. We needed them to do that. Then there's the authority to use the, use reversions to cover AP and IB courses. So that was in last year's budget. It's wonderful that they're going to cover AP and IB courses and I think the idea is like, they didn't set aside enough money to do that and they want to put something in there to make sure that they, they can cover the additional expense. So, and then we get into the DPI reduction of 10% and then all of the, the things that they are required to do. And I know you don't want me to waste time with that. So I think we've hit the highlights of that document. So I'm going to go down to, to, this is a, you know, if you want to see the, the money at the high level state, here it is. You can review that when you're sleepy, when you're not sleepy, you need to be. And so this is my summary of the impact of the state budget on our local budget. So there were increases, there are decreases, and so then there's the total. And then I just wanted you to see the impact of the positions that it would impact if, if we had no choice. If we had no fund balance, if our hands were tied, then this is what we would have to do. So that increase to our teacher allotment, 837,000, that was 15 teachers. I've already allocated 17 teachers to Jason. I have already hired those 17 teachers. So we're in. You know, we, you know, we could riff them, but the whole idea is we don't want to riff. That, you know, we can't net these numbers and that's just part of the budget process that's difficult. This is the cards that were handed and we have to play and we don't, we have no desire to riff. So the decrease, my point with that was you can't net the increase with the decrease because we've hired the teachers, they're here and we want to keep them. So we're looking at $2.3 million we don't have. The state didn't give us. They cut us. We've got to come up with a solution. And this is not new. You know, the state's been cutting us every year and we deal with it and it's called fund balance. Every year, we deal with it. If for some reason we didn't have fund balance and that wasn't an option, the only solution we would have is riff staff at this time of the year, August the 4th, or go to the county and beg. Those are the options that you would have. And I'm suggesting to you that that's not what we have to do because we've done a good job at managing our funds and I certainly am not suggesting that we do that. I'm just saying that we should use our fund balance to take care of these situations. And my note at the bottom is that we can absorb that in fund balance. Next year, we'll get some growth positions. We'll start absorbing those and overlapping those and we'll have, we'll use less and less fund balance every year. I'll just merge them and marry them. And that's the, the solution that I propose to you.
So, in anecd... Oh, hang on one second. Okay. So the only, I just had one quick question on the, I was going to make sure I'm following. You're 2,393,959.
Yes.
Saying use fund balance to avoid job, loss of jobs with that number. Why is it not the 1,538,759?
Because we've already hired $837,000 worth of teachers. They're here.
Okay. I heard you say that, but I guess I wasn't following. So the increase, that column, we've, we've absorbed or we, we're committed.
Mm-hmm.
So the 2,393, okay. I got you. All right.
It goes back to, you know, back in February, DPI told us we were going to get those teachers. So we planned for it.
Yeah. Okay. Now, I have a question before we have any other further discussion. We, we have this on the agenda as a report.
Right.
However, you've asked and you've mentioned two or three times of something that you said you need action on or wanted...
Not necessarily. I just want you to be thinking.
Okay. Well, I, I think mission accomplished if you want us thinking. And before we go on, we'll just kind of as a quick refresher or any other thing, anything else that has come up, we'll start with Mr. Walter.
Well, I'm glad that we've been prudent and kept a fund balance. How much of a fund balance do we have that we can allocate towards this?
Well, because of where we are right now and our auditors haven't come in and finalized, they won't come in and finalize our audit. They'll be in in September and won't finish up our audit till October. So I don't have a good number for you. I have last year's number.
What was last year's number?
Last year's number, we can, available to appropriate was over $6 million. But total fund balance was about $13 million.
Right. Available to apply to this situation is six. So you're saying a third of what we had available. Okay. And then how many of those custodians are yearly and how many are just 10 months?
I don't know, but I'll find out for you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Schumacher, do you have any further comments?
Well, I have comments in, in an anecdote. In 2012, we cut, we riffed close to 70 people from, or something like that. It was, it was a very large number of people that we had to give notice to from our system. But we were able to retain a fair number of people because we had a fund balance. This year, it looks like you're going to ask us to approve using close to $4 million worth of fund balance to cover the 1,440,000 that was in the continuation budget and now the 2, 2.393 million dollars in this budget. So a lot of times, there's a misunderstanding of how we, what we do with fund balance. But if we didn't have this fund balance, we would literally be giving riff papers to about 30 to 40 people, 35 TAs and you just look at this list and try to retain the ones that we just happened to hire. But here we are in August and we would actually be giving people notices right before school started. That's why it's so important that, that the public understand that yes, we do create fund balances through efficiencies in our, in our processes. And through those efficiencies, we have to create this fund balance. We have to move them into a local account and it, it's not county money or anybody else's money. It's money that we've preserved to help us through these, these chills and fevers that we go through. Next year, we've got another $500,000 that we know we're going to walk into that we've got to use for fund balance to cover driver's ed. We're, I mean, that's just standing there, looking at us in our face. And, and so it's really important people understand what, what's going on here with our fund balance. And it's not funny money. It is really helps us to make a smoother system work. And if we weren't in a growing system, we wouldn't have fund balance. We would be literally each year going down and trying to figure out how we're going to do it. And the only way you can operate without growth is to eliminate jobs. And so we're blessed with that and we're blessed with fund balance because it helps us work through these peaks and valleys of the process. But I'm very concerned about next year because now what you're saying is we're going to be projecting something we don't know.
Yeah, I'm concerned too.
And so we're going to be using fund balance to project something we may not get rewarded. And so we may start losing fund balances at least for a couple of years until we get caught up in the process. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Schumacher. Mr. Schu.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have just a few comments. First off, Kelly, thanks for bringing all of this to us, you know, spelling it out in layman's terms, what the state is doing or trying to get approved, that kind of thing. But my, the basic general comment that I have is, as I've been serving on this board for, this is soon to be the end of 12 years. And it seems like that we're always, always, always looking for more money because the state keeps taking it away. They take it away and, and whenever you cut the funding to public education, which is what we have done for years and years and years, you're just, we're witnessing the deterioration of public education because of lack of funding, not only from a state level but from a, a local level as well. And we've experienced that with this recent local budget that's been approved. And I just hate to see us, you know, North Carolina move, even though we're going to move a little bit forward, a little bit forward as far as teacher raises and that kind of thing, but look what it's costing us on the back end. I mean, we're having to give this to get that. And, and although I appreciate what we're getting, but I don't like what we're having to give up though because what it's doing is it's putting more and more unfunded mandates on the local government. And the way that it was set up, if it's the best of my understanding, was public education, the facilities and the maintenance of those facilities was supposed to be on the backs of the counties. And then the funding for the teachers and the educators was on the back of the state because it's a mandated requirement that all children from K to go through the age of 16 in North Carolina. And so when they mandated that, that's what the section was. One does this and one does that. But over the years, what has happened is the state has continually took away money, took away money and it's left us in a county where, if I'm not mistaken, now Ms. Klutz, I know you probably have those members, numbers, whether you could quote them right off, but I'm thinking though that the county is somewhere funding maybe 400 positions right now in Cabarrus County. Is that somewhere close?
I don't have those numbers to memory, but certainly we can get them for you.
Well, I mean, I'm sure that it's somewhere in that range between the different positions that we're funding, that the state should be funding, that we're, they're not, so therefore we're having to fund. And when you live in a county like Cabarrus where we're continually growing, even during the recession, we were growing, and the funding obviously has to follow the growth and it hasn't. And so it puts us, you know, sort of in a weird predicament, a bad predicament, but like you said earlier, we deal with it. We have learned over the years that we continually have to do more and more and more with less. And I, but I would like to see the tide change on that at some time where that we could put public education back in the forefront of the citizens of North Carolina and the citizens of Cabarrus County because the education is the future of our county and our state. And if we don't put what we need into these, at public education, then we're going to continue to watch it deteriorate. And that's just my little editorial on what we've done. But I appreciate, you know, what you've brought and, and show us where we're going to have to make up this and that and all. But you know what, what would happen, that it falls back on the county. So anyway, thank you, Ms. Klutz.
Thank you, Mr. Schu. Mr. Harrison, do you have any questions or comments?
Just, just ditto. This is the time of the year when it is, you know, the reality of state funding and how we have to deal with it hits and becomes very real in what we do. And again, thank you for crunching all these numbers for us. I don't want a 30-second soundbite, but is this a, overall a, a net gain, a mixed bag? Is, is all of this, this state budgetary activity and how it's impacting us and how it actually, hitting, the rubber hitting the road here in our budget numbers is, is... Are there more losses than, than gains? Help me understand in a very, very high level kind of way if this is a net good or so much bad that it's not, not a good situation? Because of course, you hear this site on Facebook and you hear that site on Facebook and sometimes hard to discern which is actually more truthful. But for Cabarrus County, is this a net good or a net bad?
As much as...
That's, that's too simplistic and I apologize to put you in that position, but that's what I'm trying to get you to pinpoint for me, please.
As much as I want to tell you that it's a net, as, that it's a net bad, I can't. So we're probably, because teacher pay raises are expensive. And I'll just tell you a real easy way to calculate it. Everything that, that happens to us is generally about 2% of the state budget. You take our ADM, you divide it by the number of students there are in the state and we're generally 2%. So you take the, the amount of pay raises down here at the bottom of this document, and I'll show you which one it is, multiply it by 10% and you can calculate how much it costs the state to give our, our teachers a raise. That's significantly more than they cut us, the 2.4 million dollars. So I want to tell you that we feel hurt, but I'll tell you the truth, it's a gain.
Good. I like the truth. I'm, I'm ready for it. I've got my seatbelt on. Give me the truth.
There was a net gain.
A net gain overall.
A net gain overall.
Okay. Thank you. And we'll work out the nitty gritty and the fine details of that in coming months, I suppose. that in coming months, I suppose. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. And net gain or not, I still don't want to be on that committee. Dr. Phillips, you have any further questions or comments?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank you, Kelly, because I know you didn't get these numbers probably until this weekend, and to put this together in such a short time is very much appreciated. I, I know the governor says that we should be celebrating this budget. I'm celebrating that they did finally get one.
Yeah.
But after seeing what you've talked about this evening, I'm, I'm not in a celebrating mood. And I think that we need to ask the administration to come up with a plan to address this driver education funding next year.
Absolutely.
Because that is going to be a recurring expense. It's not going to be littered away with growth.
That's right.
In fact, it will only get bigger as we grow. And so, we need to come up with a plan as to how we're going to address that, because we cannot keep rating fund balances where the fund balance will go away.
That's right. That's right.
Thank you, Dr. Phillips. And I don't have anything other, anything else to add. I think Mr. Schu hit on something that's important in respect to David, the answer to your question of, well, is it a net gain or a net good? The problem is, as Mr. Schu pointed out, the lines have been blurred on who's responsible for what. And at one time, those lines were pretty well drawn in the sand, and you knew locally what you had to fund, and you knew at the state what they were going to fund. And the TAs is a good example of that, you know, because we moved money to try to pay teachers and juggling it at the local level because the teachers got cut. Well, there's a disconnect between here in Raleigh of where that money is actually going. So, honestly, I don't think, I don't think there's any, I think they probably think that they funded TAs at a level that's acceptable and they, that they heard from, from people that that's something they wanted. I just don't think they quite understand how we have to shuffle and move money around at the local level and how that piece of it doesn't necessarily translate from here back to Raleigh the way it looked when they sent it here in the first place. So, you are a hundred percent right that all of that has been blurred. And that is, it's a big part of what they're responsible to do, because it's in the North Carolina State Constitution. So, with that hour and a half discussion on our first item, we will now move on.
Well, can I, can I just get one?
We've got more. Go ahead.
I just want to be clear what I need from you for the next meeting. Is that okay? And I used probably the wrong word. I said, in conclusion, I need for you to approve, but I don't, I just kind of, we're in, I'm in the position where now I need to develop the board, the budget resolution, and that's that formal document that is in function level that presented to you, that you literally approve that document. So, I'm going to go forth and do that, but I don't want to do that. And then, next month, when I present that to you, you say, no, I want to change X, Y, and Z. I want you to tell me between now and August the eighteenth, I want to change X, Y, and Z, because there's a lot of work that goes into that and getting that to the right places. So, I kind of, what I need from you now is a general kind of blessing is, yeah, this is the direction we want to go. No, this is not the direction we want to go. So, what I've outlined is, I said approve. I'm going to use the word blessing, because I don't, I don't need a formal approval. The local budget details, as we presented them to you tonight, the impact of the state budget, as we presented them to you tonight. And then, I want you to tell me any changes or questions or anything that you have prior to, if you have anything that you want me, if you want to discuss them tonight, then we'll discuss them and deal with them tonight, but prior to the August eighteenth, so that they could be incorporated into that budget resolution, and we can get the, stay on our timeline if you want to adopt a budget in September, and I assume you do.
Okay. And you, I'm confused on August eighteenth.
It is because, in order for me to get that incorporated into the document and get the board docs to ILENE by September the first, that gives me like two weeks to finish all that up.
All right. Well, why don't we do this? I think we've gotten probably enough tonight. So, in the, in the, between now, we'll have a placeholder for next week for this item, for any questions that you come up between, as you read back through the document, and we'll just have a discussion, even though it's a business meeting, we'll set aside some time for discussion, for questions. And you can send us either, if sometime this week, if you've got a general outline of what you want to do, or if we need to do that at a later date, just giving you feedback after you prepare the document. But is, can we give you some general direction next week or ask further questions then, to then be prepared for the formal document that you're going to prepare for us to then have ready by the eighteenth? Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Board members, everybody okay with that?
Well, my only question is, what's the menu of those options? What is, what are the reasonable items that superintendent and staff would recommend?
I think we'll just rely on Kelly to give us that. So, we'll digest what we've gotten here tonight. We'll ask questions this week, and then she'll bring us a little bit of that, or we'll go with what we've, you know, whatever the questions are that have come up during the week.
Because I'm sure we don't want to get into a free-for-all of my pet project versus others' pet projects.
Right.
But to defer to staff's recommendations in terms of what is most effective for the students and the teachers and what we can afford. But we'll wait for that list next week. Thank you. Thank you.
Fantastic. And we will now move on to three-point-oh-two, a blended learning update. And Dr. Van Heukle is going to give us that presentation, and I'm going to grab a water and we'll be-